So, as I mentioned, we're turning now to conditions of probation and supervised release. And I first want, the Commission's proposed amendment for public comment on supervised release is a result, didn't come out of nowhere, it's a result of collaboration with the Criminal Law Committee, which has studied the current conditions in light of recent court precedent, as well as the Commission's own multi-year review of federal sentencing practices relating to conditions of probation and supervised release. This proposed amendment revises, clarifies, rearranges conditions of probation and supervised release found in the manual. In general, the changes are intended to make the conditions more focused and precise, as well as easier to understand and to enforce. So I look forward to all our witnesses today, and I'm pleased to begin with Judge Martinez, who is testifying on behalf of the Criminal Law Committee of the Judicial Conference. I know how much time you all have spent on this. You have also been experienced judge, as a judge in the Western District of Washington since 2004, and the new chief judge out there, so welcome, Judge Martinez.
Thank you.
As much time as you want.
Judge Saris and members of the Sentencing Commission, on behalf of the Criminal Law Committee of the Judicial Conference of the United States, thank you so very much for providing us the opportunity to comment on proposed amendments to the sentencing guidelines. As you indicated, the thrust of my oral comments today are on the conditions of supervision. However, having sat through the morning and listening to the panelists speak on compassionate release, let me just point out a couple of things to the Commission on that issue. As we indicated in our written comments, our committee defers to your commission, does not offer any comment about what changes, if any, you should make. However, remember now, federal probation officers develop and implement supervision plans for inmates who are compassionately released to the community. That federal supervision program is designed to address criminogenic risks and needs rather than general medical or geriatric care. Under current law, someone who is released to the community, even for a compassionate release, they are required to complete at least one year of supervision. It makes little policy or financial sense to keep these offenders under supervision in our, from our perspective. Because of that, we have recommended, and the Judicial Conference has approved, seeking legislation that permits the early termination of supervised, supervision terms for those individuals. I don't need to remind you that supervision of these people poses dramatically different and resource-intensive challenges that have to be considered. Now, turning to the conditions of supervision. The committee is in favor of the Commission's proposed amendments to revise, clarify, and rearrange the conditions of probation and supervised release. These amendments are consistent with changes that we recently endorsed after an exhaustive review. The conditions of supervision define the sentence to be executed, establish behavioral expectations for defendants, and provide the probation officer with tools to keep informed and bring about improvements in a defendant's conduct and condition. Discretionary conditions of supervision are differentiated into either standard and special conditions. Standard conditions represent core supervision practices required in every case to fulfill the statutory duties of probation officers. Special conditions provide for additional restrictions, correctional interventions, or monitoring tools as necessary to achieve the purposes of sentencing in the individual case, and in the case of probation or parole, they provide for additional sanctions. Our committee has had an active and ongoing role in developing, monitoring, and recommending revisions to the conditions of supervision both before and after the Sentencing Reform Act. The standard conditions in the National Judgment Form were last approved by the Judicial Conference in 2011. Over the last year, the committee has reviewed the standard and most common special conditions to assess whether all of the standard conditions are required for supervision in all cases. The language for some of the standard and common special conditions can be refined, and additional guidance can be provided concerning the appropriate language and the legal and/or criminological purposes of the standard and most common special conditions. As I'm sure you're aware, this review was prompted in part by the Seventh Circuit opinions in recent years expressing concern about the wording of standard and special conditions and the manner in which they were imposed. In May of 2014, the Seventh Circuit issued the opinion, United States versus Siegel, where it summarized that common but largely unresolved problems in the imposition of conditions of supervised release. And one of the most serious problems identified by that court is that the conditions are often vague and inadequately defined. A second problem is that the probation officer's pre-sentence report or sentencing recommendation generally suggests conditions of supervised release with only brief justifications. Judges then often merely repeat the recommendations and do not explain how they comport with the sentencing factors listed specifically in 3553A. One reason for this, according to the court, is that sentencing hearing may be the very first time on which defense counsel learns of the probation officer's recommendation for conditions of supervised release. Without advance notice, counsel may have nothing to say about the conditions, the judge may therefore be less likely to question them about those conditions. An additional problem is a large number and variety of possible discretionary conditions. According to that court, the sheer number may induce haste in the judge's evaluation of the probation services recommendations, and is doubtless a factor in the frequent failure of judges to apply the sentencing factors set out in 3553A to all the recommended conditions included in the sentence. And finally, because conditions are imposed at the time of sentencing, the sentencing judge often has to guess what conditions are likely to make sense when the offender is eventually released. Obviously, the longer the sentence, the less likely that guess is to be accurate. Conditions that may seem sensible at the time of sentencing may not be so sensible many years or even decades later. Since Siegel, the Seventh Circuit has reiterated and expanded upon these concerns in numerous additional opinions. It has vacated or expressed concern about individual standard and special conditions for a variety of reasons, including being too vague, being overbroad, not including a knowledge requirement for violation, and not having an adequate justification for how that condition is reasonably related to either the offender or the offense characteristics, how they are reasonably related to the relevant statutory sentencing factors, and how they involve a minimal deprivation of liberty. So in response to this developing case law, individual districts in the Seventh Circuit and other circuits have reexamined their practices concerning the recommendation and imposition of standard and special conditions. Some districts have changed the wording of the conditions, some have reduced a number of standard conditions, and included the recommended conditions and a more comprehensive justification in the pre-sentence report. At the national level, DOJ has requested that the Commission amend the conditions of supervision and commentary in the Guidelines Manual to specifically address the concerns of the Seventh Circuit. As the DOJ recent, courts and litigants within that circuit are addressing the concerns of the Seventh Circuit in a variety of ways. They are spending a great deal of time and effort proposing and reviewing responses to conditions prior to sentencing and justifying those conditions at sentencing case by case, often struggling to find the appropriate support and justifications for various conditions of release. We feel that some level of national uniformity in standard conditions is necessary for a variety of reasons. First, they represent core supervision practices required in every case. Second, approximately 20% of offenders under supervision were sentenced in districts other than the district of supervision. Finally, uniformity in standard conditions ensures efficient policy development and training at the national level. In February of last year, the committee asked the AO to conduct a comprehensive review of the standard and most common special conditions. This review included an analysis, exhaustive analysis of case law, and numerous discussions between AO staff and probation officers concerning legal, policy, and practical issues surrounding the recommendation, imposition, and execution of conditions of supervision. As a result of these efforts, AO staff proposed revisions to the standard conditions on the National Judgment Form. Additionally, it developed a document to provide policy guidance to judges, probation officers, prosecutors, defense attorneys, and other criminal justice practitioners. The document describes the legal authority, model condition language, purpose, including reference to any criminological research, and method of implementation for the standard conditions and the most common special conditions. One purpose of that document is to provide notice to the defendant of the standard and special conditions. Additionally, it may assist the parties in determining when specific special conditions are appropriate, and in providing individualized justifications for those conditions. Finally, the document may even aid appellate courts when reviewing the imposition of conditions in those individual cases. In November of last year, the AO distributed drafts with the proposed standard conditions and guidance document to judges, probation officers, DOJ, and federal defenders, and the solicited feedback, which was then used to make necessary revisions. Additionally, AO staff collaborated with the Sentencing Commission staff with the intent of harmonizing the conditions listed in the Guidelines Manual with those in the National Judgment Form. At our next meeting in June, our committee will consider whether to approve the issuance of the new guidance document and amend the National Judgment Forms. Our committee supports the Commission's proposed amendments to revise, clarify, and rearrange the standard conditions of probation and supervised release. The proposed language is more clear, plainly worded. Additionally, many of the proposed conditions include a requirement that the defendant knowingly violate the conditions. Finally, the proposed amendments remove a number of requirements from the list of standard conditions because they are not applicable in every, in every case, or otherwise addressed by other conditions. Indeed, the Senate report accompanying the Sentencing Reform Act makes clear that the list of possible conditions in the statute, which includes supporting dependents, meeting family responsibilities, refraining from excessive use of alcohol, is only suggestive. It may be helpful to provide a more detailed discussion regarding several proposed changes. First, the committee supports the proposal to remove the current standard condition requiring that the defendant support his or her dependents and meet other family responsibilities. This condition would not be reasonably related to the history and characteristics of the defendant if he has no dependents or family obligations. Additionally, the scope of the term "meet other family responsibilities" is vague and unclear. A group of probation officers that assisted with the review of these standard conditions unanimously agreed that the term is vague and often leads to uncertain and inconsistent enforcement. Of course, if a probation officer or court determines that a condition requiring support of dependents or the satisfaction of other family responsibilities is necessary, then that probation officer in the court may recommend and impose such a requirement as a special condition. Secondly, the committee is in favor of the proposal to remove the current standard condition requiring the defendant to refrain from excessive use of alcohol. Again, the Senate report accompanying the Sentencing Reform Act made clear that it is not intended that this condition be imposed on a person with no history of excessive use of alcohol, and that to do so would be an unwarranted departure from the principle that conditions must be reasonably related to the general sentencing factors. Now, to be sure, alcohol use may, in individual cases, have a criminogenic effect or inhibit the satisfaction of other conditions, such as maintaining employment or supporting families. If a probation officer or court determines that an alcohol restriction condition is necessary, then the probation officer in court may make such a recommendation and impose such a requirement as a special condition in the individual case. It's also noteworthy that the probation officers who assisted with the review of these standard conditions also unanimously agreed that the current standard condition prohibiting excessive use of alcohol is vague, very difficult to enforce, and really not valuable as a supervision tool. In fact, the officers opine that it is more common and effective to request alcohol treatment and a complete alcohol ban if it is determined in any individual case that such a condition is reasonably related to the nature and circumstances of the offense and the history and characteristics of that defendant. Third, the committee agrees with the proposal to add as a standard condition the requirement that the defendant not own, possess, or have access to a firearm, ammunition, destructive device, or other dangerous weapon. This condition promotes a public safety and reduces safety risks posed to probation officers. To the extent that the nature and circumstances of the offense or the history and characteristics of the defendant indicate that a prohibition of possessing other types of weapons is necessary, probation officers may recommend that as a special condition. Fourth, with regard to the current standard condition requiring the defendant answer truthfully questions of the probation officer. The Commission seeks comment on whether the defendant should answer truthfully or instead be truthful when responding to the questions of the probation officer. The Commission requests feedback on both the policy and Fifth Amendment implications of these options. The purpose of the current "answer truthfully" condition is to build positive rapport and facilitate an open and honest discussion between the probation officer and the defendant. Accurate and complete information about the nature and circumstances of the offense and the history and characteristics of the defendant is necessary to implement effective supervision practices. The probation officer attempts to develop and maintain a positive relationship with the defendant through transparent communication and the implementation of evidence-based correctional practices. Our committee believes that a condition requiring the defendant answer truthfully the questions of probation officers, along with policy guidance directing probation officers how to ensure that the Fifth Amendment rights are not violated, satisfies constitutional requirements. The committee does not support the alternative proposal to require only that the defendant be truthful when responding to the questions of the probation officer. Such a condition, in our opinion, would interfere with the probation officer's ability to establish open communication with the defendant, and it would allow defendants to refuse to answer questions about compliance with conditions of supervision. For instance, if it is determined that a defendant has several risk factors for recidivism, including such things as negative social networks, antisocial cognitions, educational or vocational deficits, the probation officer may arrange a meeting with the defendant and ask questions such as, "Who were you hanging out with last night?", "Why were you yelling at your wife?", "Why didn't you go to work today?". If the defendant refuses to answer, and he is subject to a condition to be truthful when responding to questions, then the probation officer would only be able to note in the file that the defendant refused to answer. Criminogenic risk factors would not be addressed, the court would not be informed. If the defendant is subject to a condition requiring her to answer truthfully questions, the probation officer could submit a report to the court that the defendant declined to answer questions. The court can then schedule a hearing, question the offender in camera if necessary about why he or she declined to answer the questions. If the court determines that the invocation of the privilege is not valid because there's no realistic chance of incrimination, then the court can instruct the defendant to answer those questions. The Commission also requests comment about whether it should clarify that an offender's legitimate invocation of the Fifth Amendment privilege against self-incrimination in response to a probation officer's questions shall not be considered a violation of this condition. The committee supports including such a clarification in the commentary of the Guidelines Manual. In April of 2011, the committee approved this type of guidance for defendants convicted of sex offenses, when it endorsed the new Sex Offender Management Procedures Manual for probation and pre-trial officers. Under the approved guidance, if the defendant refuses to answer a specific question during an interview on the grounds that it is incriminating, the probation officer is instructed not to compel the defendant to answer the question through threat of revocation. If there is any uncertainty about whether that invocation of the privilege is valid, the probation officer is instructed to refer the matter to the court to make the final determination. Our committee believes that adding this guidance to policies concerning all types of offenders would address any Fifth Amendment concerns without having unintended consequences on the ability of probation officers to effectively supervise defendants. And finally, the Commission seeks comment on the condition of supervised release requiring the defendant shall notify the probation officer of any material change in the defendant's economic circumstances that might affect the defendant's ability to pay any unpaid amount of restitution, fines, or special assessments. This condition is currently listed as a standard condition in the Guidelines Manual but not on the National Judgment Form. The Commission seeks comment on whether this condition should be made a special condition rather than a standard one. Our committee supports classifying this obligation as a special condition, again, because it may not be applicable in all cases. In many cases, there is no fine or restitution imposed. Any special assessment is usually paid while the defendant is in the Bureau of Prisons. For those defendants who are released to the community with any outstanding criminal monetary penalties, a requirement to notify the probation officer of a change in economic circumstances can be addressed by requesting or imposing a special condition. I want to take a few minutes to discuss other measures that the Criminal Law Committee is working on related to the conditions of supervision. At the national level, some guidance currently exists concerning the imposition of standard and special conditions of supervision. For instance, under Section 3563D and 3583F, the court is required to direct that the probation officer provide the offender with a written statement that sets forth all the conditions in which the sentence is subject, and that is sufficiently clear and specific to serve as a guide for the defendant's conduct and for such supervision as is required. Under Judicial Conference policy, in recommending a unique special condition, probation officers should ensure that the recommended wording is clear, legally sound, and meets the intended purpose. The federal supervision model is founded on the conditions of supervision and comprised of strategies that are sufficient but no greater than necessary to facilitate achievement of the desired outcome. Every supervision activity should be related to the statutory purposes for which the term of supervision was imposed, and the related objectives established for that individual case. Special conditions are to be sought by probation officers only when the depravations of liberty or property they entail are tailored specifically to address the issues presented in the individual case. Before recommending special conditions, probation officers should consider all of the mandatory and standard conditions that may already address any particular risk or need. If the officer determines that the mandatory and standard conditions do not adequately address those risks and needs, he or she then should consider recommending special conditions. Under Judicial Conference policy, courts are further discouraged from adding additional conditions to the list of standard conditions, such as substance abuse, testing, or treatment, since they impose an obligation on the probation office that has implications for both staffing and funding. When considering special conditions, probation officers should avoid presumptions with the use of set packages of conditions for groups of offenders, and keep in mind that the purposes vary depending on the type of supervision. Officers should ask first whether the circumstances in this case require such a deprivation of liberty or property to accomplish the relevant sentencing purposes at this time. For defendants facing lengthy terms of imprisonment, probation officers should truly consider whether the risks and needs present at the time of sentencing will be present when the defendant returns to the community. In some cases, it may be very appropriate to avoid recommending special conditions until such time as the defendant is preparing to re-enter the community. Despite the existing national guidance, the committee feels that it may be necessary to provide further guidance concerning the language and justification for standard and special conditions to assist the courts with ensuring the condition language is clear and legally sound, providing the required justification for conditions, and providing proper notice to defendants about the types of conditions that may be imposed. AO staff is in the process of finalizing a document to provide guidance to judges, probation officers, prosecutors, defense attorneys, and other criminal justice practitioners. The document describes the legal authority, model condition language, purpose, including references to research where applicable, and method of implementation for the standard conditions as well as the most common special conditions. At our June 2016 meeting, the committee will consider whether to approve the issuance of the new guidance document. In addition to this document, the committee will also assess whether to recommend any changes to policies or procedures to provide defendants with sufficient notice and justification for discretionary conditions before and during the sentencing hearing. This could be achieved by having probation officers include proposed conditions in the pre-sentence report or sentencing recommendation. Additionally, our committee will assess...
I'm just wondering, at some point, we're going to want to jump in with questions, so...
I'm almost done. All right. Additionally, we will assess whether to endorse or recommend changes in policies and procedures regarding the imposition and modification of discretionary conditions at the time of the defendant's release from prison. Finally, any change in condition language, policies, and procedures requires training for effective implementation. Our committee will collaborate with the Federal Judicial Center and others to provide all necessary training for judges and probation officers. Once again, thanks to the Sentencing Commission for providing us the opportunity to comment on these proposed changes to the sentencing guidelines, as we have always in the past. The members of our committee look forward to working with the Commission to ensure that our sentencing system is consistent with the central tenets of the Sentencing Reform Act.
Thank you very much, and we very much appreciate the collaboration as well. These proposals came over from Criminal Law. I didn't realize it would generate so many comments, actually, from both, from everybody, and we're about to hear from folks, but I want to know if there are any questions.
I have a couple of questions. I wanted to address the point that I think you answered spontaneously today in light of the supervised release, compassionate release. Is it your understanding that if somebody is... I've been on 19 years, and I've never had one of these cases. Is it your understanding that if somebody is released on compassionate release, that they would then be placed on supervised release, and they're out of the custody of the Bureau of Prisons? So it's different from, quote, "a halfway house", where they're still in the custody of the Bureau of Prisons. Your understanding is that they simply go over to the probation department?
In the 15 and a half years that I've been on the federal court bench, I've never had one of these either, but that is exactly my understanding, that under current law, they would have to serve at least one year of supervised release.
The second question I have is that, at least in our circuit, please, that you are in our circuit, the way, the way I have dealt with, with these conditions that may no, no longer be applicable, is that when the, when the defendant is returned to the district, or is in the district in which the conditions were imposed, in 80% of the cases or otherwise, and the probation officer believes that a condition is inappropriate, or that a different condition should be added, I then would get a request. We get requests all the time to modify and so forth. Do you find that satisfactory? Is that something that, rather than bringing the defendant in front of the judge for the recitation of all those conditions, they go in front of the probation officer? Probation officer says, "You may not remember what happened eight years ago, but here were the 12 conditions. I want to go over them with you to make sure that in the passage of time, you still understand them." And if there is one that is inappropriate, whatever reason, they then come to the court. Do you follow that practice?
That's exactly what we do in our district, and as you're aware, you know, as time goes by, judges retire, and then other judges come on board. I inherited several judges' caseloads from prior sentencing, and many, many times, when those people are finally released, we will get modifications simply from the probation officer. Now, remember, if the defendant objects to any of those modifications, then they have a right to bring it back into court. But for the majority of time, I'd say well over 90%, the defendant agrees, and we simply sign off on it, modify it.
Commissioner Barco? Yeah, I'm just curious, in the issue about the Fifth Amendment issue that comes up in terms of requiring people to answer truthfully, one of the proposals we got from the defenders was this language, which I'm just going to read to you and see if this is a compromise position, if this covers what your concerns would be. What if we said something along the lines of, "The defendant must answer truthfully or be truthful when responding to the questions asked by the probation officer regarding compliance with the conditions of supervision, but the defendant remains free to exercise the Fifth Amendment right against self-incrimination when the questions pose a realistic threat of incrimination in a separate criminal proceeding"? Would something like that balance the interests of needing the open communication when you're talking about anything related to the conditions of supervision, but at the same time reminding the defendant that if it's anything that might be self-incriminating, you have the Fifth Amendment right?
Our committee does not make that specific recommendation, but I think that your suggestion makes some sense. Clearly, you know, offenders in supervision retain their constitutional right against self-incrimination. In my opinion, if, it really comes down to training, because if an officer has any doubt about whether that refusal of the answer is legitimate, it can always be referred to the court for a finding, and that's what we would recommend.
Let me ask this, in the 22 years now I've been on the bench, I've never had most of these issues come up. They come up on child pornography, but for the most part, they come up later in revocations or requests for modifications, not at sentencing. So, for the first time, I've actually started thinking about the difference between a standard condition and a special condition. It's generally not litigated, and the big question that I have, which I guess is an overarching philosophical issue, is sometimes we keep imposing conditions. There's the standard conditions, and then I add to them the special conditions, to the point where someone comes out... the point where when someone comes out, they've got so much they have to comply with. You know, I often say, "Batters programs, and mental health programming, and drug treatment programming, and vocational education, and, you know, blah, blah, blah." I mean, it goes on and on, and most of these people have just come out of prison. Maybe they don't need it anymore, or maybe it's just asking too much of somebody when they're just coming back. And so, I think the debate was, should this be a standard condition or a special condition? And I'm wondering whether, in your experience, that makes...we should be pushing more into the special, and then we should be focusing more when they come out as to what they need.
That's exactly what we're saying, and I've been a judge for 26 years now, in the state system and the federal system. I've sentenced hundreds of defendants. In the federal system, you're right. The only time we've had an issue in court has been on the child pornography people, because those are very specialized conditions. You're also talking about prohibiting them from using computers, being connected to the Internet, which now, you know, it's almost necessary to be able to get along and survive and get a job. But I agree with you that we can very easily end up over-supervising people and putting way too many conditions on their supervision for a lot of these people. Now, remember, many of these defendants got there in criminal court because they couldn't follow all the rules at that point, and we are loading more rules onto their plate. Placing too many of those, I think, is almost guaranteeing that they are going to fail. Research has shown that supervision should be targeted towards higher-risk, higher-need offenders. It also has shown that if you over-supervise low-risk people, that actually results in a worse outcome in the long run. So yes, we have to be careful about doing that. I agree with you.
Any questions? Anybody else?
I just want to thank you for being on the...well, being on the Criminal Law Committee. It is an extraordinarily valuable committee for the Sentencing Commission. I've seen it now work, and you really are the voice of the judiciary, coming in and talking to us from a judge's point of view. The sentencing guidelines are directed to judges. So thank you so much for your service. It's very, very valuable.
Thank you very much.
I know I speak on behalf of you.
It's my favorite committee. Thank you.